Okay. We're checking J-12, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to move to a time certain, just a few minutes behind, but we wanted to give everybody a chance to get settled in and sat down. This is item brought by Commissioner Tobia, item J-12. Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I get into the nuts and bolts of this, I wanted to give a little bit of a historic perspective of where the Board has been, at least from my perception, these last couple of years. And it starts about two years ago in October of 2015. I guess it's been three years ago. Then Commissioner Smith, current Commissioner Smith, said he wasn't anti-CRA. He said he was anti-perpetual CRA. CRAs that just don't go away. They last 20, 25, 30 years and then come back and they ask for an extension, end quote. So with that, the Board asked, made some direction to our county manager. We voted unanimously to ask municipalities to bring CRAs to a closure prior to their statutory sunset dates. Fast forward to just over a month ago. On October 23rd, this Board voted to acknowledge that Cocoa CRA is extending its CRA to the statutory maximum of 60 years, redirecting at least $7.5 million from county funds. So to answer this question, why this is coming forward, it's very simple. Because I have made a promise here that I don't intend on raising taxes. And if we don't intend on raising taxes and we're obligated to spend $7.5 million, that $7.5 million has to come from somewhere. And make no mistake, what this action does makes up 1/30th of this $7.5 million bill that Cocoa CRA put on this very Board. So while there is nothing we can do about the Cocoa CRA as it was created prior to the county charter, our county attorney's office has informed me that passports have sometimes at least had the foresight to keep some residual authority when it created certain CRAs, including the Diamond Square CRA. When this CRA was created in 1997, we included in the resolution, quote, "The Board of County Commissioner reserves the right to either revoke the delegation of authority to the city or to designate themselves as the redevelopment agency at the time that the Board, one, deems that is necessary for the protection of health, safety, welfare, or fiscal interests of the public or the redevelopment area." This resolution would activate the first part of this provision, revoking some of the delegation of authority we granted, potentially saving at least $264,000 of the public's tax money. Again, it would not allow us to recoup the $7.3 million of losses which the Cocoa CRA and the City of Cocoa has forced upon us within the last month and a half, but is incumbent upon us to take every step available to avoid further waste, and this is a good first step. This would allow us to obtain documentation of the current fiscal state of the CRA. This is a question of priorities. Funds could be used, the funds that currently could be used are general funds. This is maintaining parks, employee raises, or lifesaving equipment for firefighters. While I don't always agree with Mr. Bill Mick, I heard him say something that was quite profound. Recently, he said, quote, "After 20 years and you're still blighted, after 20 years and you're still having problems, what good has county investment done year after year?" So in conclusion, to be clear, Cocoa will still pull in $7.3 million more than county taxpayers had just a few weeks ago. This would not shut down the CRA. It would just limit their ability to encumber county funds until we decide that that is best, that is the best way forward. And that is the introduction. Madam Chair.
Okay, we're going to move to public comments and then we'll bring it back to the Board. We have quite a few cards, about 15 or 16 cards. And I would just ask, you know, you have three minutes, and please, by God, use all three of those minutes if that's what you choose. Be respectful, and we will be respectful and quiet and listen to you as well. So we'd have a couple of names. M.E. Kelly. And after M.E. Kelly, we have Pastor Oliver Welk.
Welk.
Welk. Oh, sorry. Pastor Wells, you're next.
Yes, ma'am. I'm M.E. Kelly, and I'm with Habitat for Humanity here in Brevard County. Since the inception of Diamond Square, Habitat for Humanity has built several homes in Cocoa. Mr. Tobia, you talk about low income, affordable housing. That's what we have done there. You talk about a waste of $7 million going to them. When I've done a little research, and back in October, there was $7 million spent on a new sports arena in Titusville. There was $5 million for an upgrade of soccer fields and lacrosse fields in Vieira. $1.7 million to expand campgrounds in Palm Bay. $5,000 for the Cape Canaveral Air Force Station lighthouse. $200,000 for the pier in the lagoon. When you talk about the problems that the lagoon is having, you want to repair up here when the problems have not been taken care of. Like I say, they have supported Habitat since their inception for very low and low-income families. They do have a tax base from those homes in Cocoa. We have partnered with Cocoa to put six female vets in a veteran village because there's nothing in Brevard County for female vets. I am a female vet, and this means the world to me. And it's not just the vets that you are taking affordable housing from. It's also the future. And Cocoa is one of the hardest-hit areas in Brevard County for low income. Diamond Square is an asset to this county and to Cocoa. Thank you.
Pastor Wells. And after Pastor Wells, we'll have Tracy Moore. Can you state your name and address? I'm sorry.
Yes.
This is my first meeting, so you just have to bear with me.
It's okay. Pastor Oliver Welk, representing Christ the King Church, meeting at First Baptist Church of Cocoa.
Thank you.
I want to just very quickly follow up on the comment of the young lady that was before me. Not only is Diamond Square an asset, it's a necessity. This is what we don't really recognize. Sometimes when we talk about where we put money, we don't recognize that the people are the place where, or is the place, where the investment needs to be. And the document that Mr. Tobia just read, one of the things that it talks about is that this Board has the charge to do its best with the CRAs, to work with them. That's the reason you're buying in with that money. And there is, let me say this, there is proof that those funds, even though there's all kind of talk about mismanagement and all that, those funds are being used, are going to be used, in a manner that is absolutely necessary for the betterment of the community. You don't want blight. You want situations where communities and people are growing, and where they're being bettered, then what you want to do is do your very best to keep whatever will help with this. This move by Mr. Tobia, I think it's good to look at, to review what's going on financially, but this is the wrong action to do. And let me say this, I do recognize that the City of Cocoa is in a situation with its land where it cannot move any more east, can't move north or south. If there's any movement to be done, it would have to be west. That's a big piece of this. And don't think, don't think we're blindsided by it. So I'm asking that this Board, all right, would take into consideration the people, the people. Because without those dollars, if you pull this 90, this 90,000 out, and you just tell the people to just fend for themselves, then you'll be responsible for the blight. You'll be a part of it. So we thank you.
Thank you. After Tracy Moore, we'll have Oliver Mohammed. Can you state your name and address, please?
Good evening, Tracy Moore, 2747 Wentworth Place in Cocoa, Florida. Thank you for this opportunity to talk. Now, how do you break the cycle of poverty? See, we have poverty in 626. That poverty is 59.2%. There are children under 18 in poverty, 76%. There are seniors 65 and under, and over rather, in poverty at 24%. So how do you measure the community civility and civic responsibility? We look at some of these statistics of the census tract 626, and we see economically depressed designated by the federal government, enterprise zone, and hub zone. Without the existence of the Diamond Square Board, our total effort has been to provide a conduit for partnerships, to generate projects that will capture our community spirit. Throughout our budget, one of the smallest CRA budgets in Brevard County, we have still managed to create a gold mine of diamonds. Examples of those projects, we heard tonight with the Habitat for Humanity, we have included better streets, we have united our community to its closest business zone, like Cocoa Village, and we are bordering with Rockliss, Florida. So we are resurfacing our street sidewalks and bike lanes. We're manicuring State Road 520 that leads to our beaches, and we have instituted benches and trashcan, street lights, better infrastructure, representing the elimination of yesterday's blight and opening the door for more economic growth. So civic duty is what I present to you tonight, because hope is not just an American promise, it's not just a Cocoa promise. See, our partnerships have captured Diamond Square dignity, and we still need to bring that kind of dignity to the Cocoa area. Diamond Square continues its effort with single-family housing, workforce housing, and veteran housing initiatives. And month-to-month, we do get reports from the Housing Authority, and we do look at where we are overall. Our civic-minded businesses like Wawa, Dollar General, Family Dollar, has provided an expanded vision that there is a viable business district in Diamond Square. We hope that we'll bring pharmacies, grocery stores, and jobs to Diamond Square and all Brevard County residents. So through workforce training, through organizations like Alliance for Neighborhood Restoration, we are presenting civic responsibility. So I say to you in closing, the Diamond Square has come too far to stop our civility now. For the least of these, we ask that your Board continues to provide us with the tools for our Diamond Square community to build stronger alliances and partnerships that will showcase the diamonds that our community possesses.
Thank you. And after Oliver, we have Marisol Soto.
Oliver Mohammed, 2460 Mercury, Cocoa.
Thank you.
I'm here, I'm still in a case of just a little lower than shock, because the Diamond Square CRA is not just another CRA. The Diamond Square CRA is there to ward off desperation. The people in our community are in a more of a desperate state. It's a life and death. You have young men, right, today as we speak, who are in jail because they were victimized by the poverty in that community. And in the initiative to reduce the crime, they got caught up in that net, where they're trying to get crime off the street. One of the speakers who came earlier, I believe it was the lady who spoke first, she read a litany of things that you are using your funds to do. And the things that I heard was things that would be in a category of extracurricular activity. So if you've got funds to give toward that kind of activity, then you should have funds to deal with the desperation that we face in the Diamond Square community. When that initiative was brought to the area, it was one that was like salvation. Not that it was the answer to everything, but it was an opportunity. Now, what you come in here and do, right after you get in office, as you kick the legs from under a table of hope, to help turn that community around. It seems like when everybody gets ready to cut the budget and save money, they come to Diamond Square. The railroad, the East Coast Railroad, had an initiative to close the railroads that they thought were superfluous. So the City of Cocoa directed attention to our railroad that represented access from our community to US-1. So they closed that railroad, and in closing the railroad, they closed the street. Where in closing the street, they closed the hope of people who were investing in that area to develop it as an economic corridor. And the City of Cocoa told us they would help us to do that. But once you close the street, then you close down that opportunity. You can't have a viable business area-
Sir?
-in a cul-de-sac.
Your three minutes is up. I don't want to cut you off, but I want to be respectful of everybody else.
I'm sorry. But what I want you to do is reconsider and understand that the needs in our community are not the same, it's not just a line item.
Thank you, sir. Marisol, and then we'll have George Austin, Jr.?
My name is Marisol Soto. I want to thank you all for being here. This is, I mean, welcome-
Can you name an address?
...to the new year. 436 Satsuma is where my husband and my son lives.
Thank you.
And I wanted to speak up for them. First of all, I'm just coming up for the community center at the Diamond Square that was promised already to us. They said the money was there. I was just wondering, when is it going to start being built? It needs to start, first of all, they said it has asbestos, and it's still being used for children. Why is it still being used? That's what they told us. It was for asbestos. They said it was going to be rebuilt, so I was wondering, when is it going to start being built? They had the money for it already, so I don't know if they're using the money for something else, or whatever. Another problem is that we're having is, once they've built Wawa and the other two stores, we have so much traffic that, and they're building those little diamond square tops, that when you turn your car, you're hitting all the bumps because it's so dark. You don't have no light, so you're messing up your car rims, you're messing up your whole cars, because they're building these diamond square bumps, so one car goes this way, one this way. Now, from Fitz to Jolie's, Barbara Jenkins, there's nothing there, but you have no space for two cars to turn. So my daughter, yesterday, ran her car over sidewalk, both friends. I mean, you're messing up your cars. What was they thinking when they started building with no streets? I mean, the streets are too tiny for cars to be turning. A lot of traffic, a lot of traffic, you know? And we're living in the, they're living in the back of Jolie Smith, so when they were hanging out there, there was a lot of car parked there, which, okay, there's, didn't have enough parking on the side. Now, they moved them, so we want to know when they're going to start building, so we know when, prepare ourselves for the noise and all that, because I know we're going to hear it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
After Mr. Austin, we'll have Thomas Cole.
Name an address, please.
George Austin, 844 Shoshone Trail, Patrick Air Force Base.
Thank you.
All right. I guess it's unfortunate and I'm unfortunate. I'm fortunate that me, probably like you, would be able to move from the Diamond Square area if you chose to. Unfortunate, because I get to spend less time with people that have a heart and a hope and a desire to dream. A city is only strong as its people. I respect law and order. Like I say, I'm a retired Marine who read this book several times and don't like the way it ends, and I don't think you will neither. I've seen this in Baltimore, DC, Philadelphia, San Diego, Savannah, and Atlanta. I recruited for the Marine Corps in those areas. I know that CRAs is impactful on a community. It gives a community an opportunity to be able to grow, to be able to hope, to be able to lead, be able to dream. I moved here about 30 years ago, instead of going back to Baltimore, and now this Commission is beginning to act like Baltimore is historically in-app leadership. When progress is being made, why would you pull the rug from underneath success? We now have people in positions that have the city's heartbeat, best interests. Slavery is a means to control people, to be dependent on society, which controlled the purse strings and their environment. Diamond Square CRA gives us an opportunity to be able to do the things in the community that's necessary. Kids need to see progress, have hope, and be able to dream. The revitalization of the Diamond Square Board provides not just the infrastructure investment, but an investment in the lives of community, and especially the future of our children. The question is, is this area worthy? That's the question that needs presented to the Commission. Is the Diamond Square area worthy? Maybe we should use the airport hangars for housing. Maybe we should take the water that's dealing, the replacement and dealing with the lagoon for the people that don't have a home to live in, that need to worry about what's happening along the rivers. All we need is a level playing field. Now that we have people in positions that have the city's best interests at heart, we request that the Diamond Square CRA be continued, because it gives the community a voice for the community, from the community. Thank you.
After Thomas Cole, we have Raymond Rivera.
Before you start, I just want to compliment that bow tie. That's awesome.
Thank you very much. I would like to speak on behalf of Emma Jewel Charter Academy, which is located in Diamond Square community. I'm here with, today with my student government officers. These are the ones who've been elected to operate the school and make decisions throughout the school. I thought it was very, very important for them to be here for this particular process. About six years ago, when God put it upon my heart to open up a school for my wife and I, he directed me to the Diamond Square community. There were a lot of people were telling me to go to particular areas, to pick particular areas to open up the school, but I did not want to go there, because God wanted me to operate in the Diamond Square community. I had an opportunity to work with the CRA when they were developing the redevelopment plan, and when I looked at the plan from the previous year and this plan, I've seen a significant amount of growth. The folks who were serving on that CRA are very passionate about the community. They believe in the community. I think that the growth that is there is going in a particular direction. And one of the things, in terms of, I named my grandmother, my grandmother is the namesake of the school. One of the things she always used to say to me, she always say that every dollar helps. But I want to turn that around for a minute and get all of the Commissioners to understand that every dollar taken away hurts, so it also goes in the other direction as well too. One of the things that I always think about as the school leader is that the decisions that I make throughout the day do not end at 5 o'clock. If I make a decision for one of these scholars behind me, these decisions are going to affect them for the rest of their lives, whether it may be giving them extra tutoring, whether it may be extra support, mentoring, or whatever that case may be. Those decisions are going to affect those scholars for the rest of their lives. I implore the Commissioners in an attempt to raise your cognition and also understand that the decisions that you make are not just going to affect these scholars, but generations and generations after these scholars as well too, because there's so much growth that has taken place. I mean, folks have named the different businesses coming in, in terms of commerce, in terms of improvement, or what have you. I have invested a significant amount of my personal money, because I believe in the Diamond Square community. I believe in the growth that is happening. I believe in the growth that will continue to happen. But we need to continue to partner, and that CRA has done a great job of partnering and bringing other folks in that's going to continue to get rid of some of that blight that you talk about, get rid of some of those crimes you talk about, continue to start some of those grassroots educational initiatives, like the Neighborhood Restoration, Alliance for Restoration, that are doing at grassroots level. And those are the things that are going to stop some of the systemic challenges that we've been dealing with, as you said, over the last 20 years. So taking it out now, I think, would be catastrophic. So I implore you to consider the decisions you make today. Thank you.
Thank you. Raymond, and then after Mr. Rivera, we'll have John Tidkovich, Ticanich, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, Honorable Commissioners, my name's Ray Rivera. I own a building at 625 Peachtree. We own it under Diamond Rivera LLC. We operate Diamond Scientific out of that company. I moved there, there was one employee. Today, I've got five, three of those living in the neighborhood. And most recently, we filed for our first patent. I relocated to that area primarily because there was a CRA there, and it helps me in my government work and my government business. And I found that the community was very supportive, and I encourage the Commission to maintain the CRA as it is. And I, there's just some irony today, as a famous Republican president lies in state that, who was a war hero and believed in the practice of selfless concern for others, that we have a conversation about not increasing those that have, but taking away from those that don't. And it brought to mind, brought to mind some lyrics from Glenn Frey. Now, some of you may not be as old as me and remember who Glenn Frey was, but I'll read them, since I've got a few minutes left, or a minute left. I've got mine. Someone is sleeping on the sidewalk as the winter sun goes down. Someone's drinking champagne in another part of town. As he sips his wine, it sure feels good, sitting here tonight, now that I've got mine. So I encourage you to reconsider this proposal, Commissioner Tobia, and I encourage all of you to vote no against his proposal. Thank you. So, I encourage you to reconsider this proposal, Commissioner Tobia, and I encourage all of you to vote no against his proposal. Thank you.[594.54][594.54](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Commissioners, John Takanich, Senior Manager of City Coco, 65 Stone Street. Thank you for the opportunity to be, appear before you this evening. I urge you to please be deliberate and understand the consequences and make no mistakes what you're being asked to approve. The proposed resolution will negatively impact the Diamond Square community. It unfairly targets an area that is recognized as one of the most underserved and disadvantaged areas, not only in our city, but in the county and the state. CRAs represent a partnership between the city and the county whereby a portion of the tax revenue generated from within the redevelopment area is reinvested by both the county and the city back in the redevelopment area. These revenues are to address the issues of blight and bring about revitalization over the course of time. The property owners of Diamond Square pay $176,000 of taxes into the general fund for the county, and the county earmarked $75,000 to reinvest back into the CRA. So, these tax dollars are solely generated from within the redevelopment area. The county's not subsidizing the Diamond Square CRA. You are reinvesting property taxes collected from the property owners of the CRA back into the CRA. Through the CRA, the county and the city are enabling the Diamond Square taxpayers to reinvest in their own community, to improve their community. Recognizing that the CRA's limited resources, the city has undertaken a numerous projects of the Diamond Square redevelopment plan that total into millions because of its resources. Why? Because it's the right thing to do and it's just. It's pay now or pay later. I mean, somebody mentioned it earlier about breaking the cycle of generational poverty and low educational attainment, and we could bring, I was going to come up here, I didn't want to give you a bunch of facts and stuff and show you how disparate the needs are within the Diamond Square community. You all know it, you've been there, you've seen it. If you really want to protect the health, safety, welfare, or fiscal interest of the public or the redevelopment area, the question shouldn't be where else can we better redirect Diamond Square taxpayer dollars? It should be what else can we collaboratively, the county and the city, do to support the Diamond Square community? Unfortunately, the decades of disinvestment and decline have led to the creation of the Diamond Square CRA, and that's not going to be reversed overnight. You won't find, I mean, you will not, you are, there's tangible progress that's happening in Diamond Square right now, and it's not revitalization, it's a contact sport, and it occurs, one project at a time, you get success. And when you have the disparate and the impoverished needs of this community, and you face that, and you have to, you get such little revenue, $206,000, 18 years after its formation, $206,000. So, what this resolution says to the residents that are hanging in there, making it work, you've wasted your hard work and your investment, there's no hope for you in the Diamond Square community, and we need your tax dollars to fund services outside of Diamond Square CRA, even though you paid those taxes. The one thing I will add, Madam Chair, and I apologize, because we did call and I was told it was five minutes, I have one small paragraph left, I promise.
Okay.
It's, I'm very concerned, because this goes back to the mechanics of the resolution. I'm concerned, obviously, about the county, the revocation of power, and the seeking to recapture its portion of TIF revenues. But I'm also concerned, because the Diamond Square CRA entered into a multi-year development agreement on November 8th, approved on October 15th, with Habitat to develop housing for female veterans. This resolution prohibits the disposition of property. And so, we are getting ready to close on those lots, there's six homes for female veterans. So, I'm concerned whether or not this resolution impairs the Diamond Square's contractual obligations. Not only is it conveying the lots to Habitat for Humanity, it also is providing a financial contribution in the agreement. And the city's acquired 27 other lots for affordable and workforce housing. We're asking you to do the right thing. The Diamond Square community is not the CRA that, you know, I know you've got some concern, Commissioner Tobia, and I would love to sit down and talk with you regarding the Coco CRA, but this is not the CRA to take it out on. This CRA is very meritorious and deserving. Please vote no on this resolution.
Okay, Commissioner.[886.63][886.63](APPLAUSE). Commissioner Tobia?
I just had a quick question for Mr. Takanich. Are you familiar with the Sanibel Harbor Marriott Resort and Spa in Fort Myers? One that offers spa treatments with the goal that all guests experience total relaxation? One that has a restaurant and a princess yacht, multiple cabana bars, and three outdoor swimming pools? Maybe in the last six or seven weeks?
In the last six or seven weeks, no, but it's one of my wife's favorite places to go, so I have been there and I'm familiar with it, yes.
Did you, my question is, did you attend a conference there costing the, you budgeted $3,780 to attend that conference?
That's an excellent question, sir.
And then my second question on that one is...
Could I possibly answer it?
I'm looking, this...
Could I possibly answer it, sir?
You can't speak out.
Yeah, I'm going to finish. And then I have, according to public record requests, I understand the issue with the public comment, let me point out that these resources, $40,000, $38,000 and change, have come directly from this CRA's budget. So, my question is, you know, you budgeted $3780, if you didn't attend that, if you didn't attend that one as your budget said you were going to, where did, where is the other $38,000, and what other conferences did you attend costing that CRA more than $38,000?
I will be more than glad, I can assure you, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but your numbers are wrong, sir. I did not attend, but I know members of the board did attend. How are they to engage and make meaningful decisions on, and proper decisions on what they should be doing in terms of redevelopment if they don't get educated and they don't go to these conferences? Commissioner Loebert, you're an attorney, you go to conferences to get continuing education related to your law profession. I mean, everybody does this, and this conferences are geared towards training the redevelopment board members on what, how they should be acting, you know, in terms of not making sure they're not, one, like the Miami, people that point out in the Miami-Dade Grand Jury Report, the Brevard, the Broward County Inspector General Report, the Daytona Report. So, they go there and they learn about fundamentals of redevelopment, they also learn what they should do, should not do, and what projects out there that might say, hey, wait, that may work in our community. You know, that might be a better way to do this, and we might be able to get more bang for our buck if we did it this way. So, that's why they budget money to go to the conferences. But I don't believe it was $38,000, sir. I will, I will get with you, but it's, I'm fairly certain.
You're right, it's more. And I got it through the public record request that we got out of, out of your office, and to be very clear, and I thank you for, to be very clear, my, my, my office, the phone works, and you are absolutely more than welcome to contact my, my office, and you're more than welcome to put whatever you want out in the paper, but you're also more than welcome to have this conversation, if you want, in my office. But I'd be more than willing to provide you with the $38,000 that you provided me with when I looked into how the CRA was deciding to spend their money. And I was a little disappointed that $3,700, just this year alone, was budgeted for a conference at that facility. And I apologize if it wasn't you going, but it was budgeted for at least four folks on behalf of the CRA to go to said conference, according to your budget.
$3,700, okay, because I think you're creating a perception that it was $38,000. It was $3,700 these past years.
$3,780, correct, and since the inception, a total of $38,000. I'm not creating a perception, I'm just reading the numbers that you provided.
I think people think you, that this agency spent $38,000, and they have not. They have gotten to the point in the past where they can only select one or two members to go, and it was only recently did they select four members to go, because they do get new members coming in, and they need to be informed, and they need to understand the basics of redevelopment. It's not, every, these are citizen board members. They're, they're offering up their time, they don't have all the knowledge and expertise, staff brings it to them, but they, just like you all go to Florida Association of County conferences, we go to Florida League of Cities Conference, they go to the Florida Redevelopment Association Conference, because that's where you get the basis and the knowledge to make informed decisions.
Yes, just to be clear on that one, and I apologize, I, all I saw was the budget, I did not see the attendees to go. But I have, this is a $200,000 budget, $206,000 budget.
$3,700 of it.
Okay. To be clear, the budget of the Brevard County Commission is about $1.3 billion, and you've public record requested my office, you're more than welcome to do it, but please, public record request my office for any travel expenses that I have taken as a county commissioner. You will not find one penny for, and I've attended conferences in Washington, DC, I pay for it with, with, with my resources to get up there, to stay in hotels.
Excuse me.
No, 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 no.
Order, order, or I'm going to clear the room and just have the speakers come in one at a time.
They get paid zero, sir. They're volunteering their time and effort. It's the only thing that, I mean, so to ask them to put out money on their own, many of them fall within the conditions that exist within Diamond Square, and to ask them to put that money out, they wouldn't be able to, sir.
Just want to point out that of this money, $40,000, or almost $40,000, was spent on expenses to very nice hotels and very nice conferences that would be out of, in all honesty, my means.
Over a 16-year period?
Every penny, I was just told, every penny is important, sir.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And I take $38,000 extremely seriously.
Actually, so does this agency, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Purcell?
Sir, are you going to be around? I'd like to ask you some questions, but I'd actually like to do it after public comment and sort you some details.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
And I would just ask, I know this is a very impassioned subject, I would just ask that you be respectful. I know you're angry, or you feel the urge to shout out. I feel like ringing the necks of one or two of my colleagues at times when we go at it, but just please be respectful, we want to maintain order. I want to hear what the speaker says at the podium, and I don't want the distraction to be, and whether you're yelling at us or yelling at fellow speakers, I just ask that we try to maintain some level of decorum, so we can hear everyone speak and everyone gets to be heard clearly. So, thank you. Anyway, Lieutenant Mike Delatorre?
Delatorre.
Delatorre. And then Trevor Tezal?
Lieutenant Mike Delatorre, Cocoa Police Department, 1226 West King Street, Cocoa, Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking time to listen to me today. As we sit here and listen to all this today, I'm the public servant that's been there for 23 years, and I've done a lot of community policing in my time. And during that time at Cocoa Police Department, I was there before the CRA came into effect. And I have worked this blighted area for a really long time. I've had five knee surgeries, two shoulder surgeries, fighting that crime in that area. I have worked with a lot of the community policing efforts that we've done over the years. And over the years, we've had federal programs come into this area, because this area was so blighted, and it was so, just riddled with crime. So, we end up partnering with federal agencies and with state agencies, and the CRA is created also at that time. And what it has, how do you change a culture? How long does it take a culture? Over 20 years? Does it take 25 or 30 years? We're talking about a culture in this area that just was, I mean, really bad at one time, and you're talking about a lot of despair. It's very hard to change that over time. And through this little bit of money that you're talking about, I get a chunk every year from the CRA to do crime prevention and neighborhood programs. And through these crime prevention programs, I'm able to work with the kids and a lot of the youth. We've heard some about Alliance for Neighborhood Restoration today. We have, they have been a partner of ours since back in probably 1995, and they go back where the federal programs came in, and now the federal programs are gone. And what still sustains? The money, some of the money from CRA with crime prevention programs. And these programs specifically target the youth and the redevelopment of this area. Right before the downturn, this area was, the economic downturn, this area was somewhat being revitalized. I know, because I was responsible for a lot of the, going after a lot of the blighted area with code enforcement, and we were moving in a direction, government housing started knocking their government housing project house, and we were going to build single-family homes in this area. The downturn came, and what happened? Now we have a blighted area again with empty houses, or empty streets with no houses. Time continues to go on, and now we start to have the upturn, and now things are starting to turn around. You can see it in this area. I have seen it in this area. We're actually building single-family homes. I'm not talking about a lot of money here, really. And if you take this money away, it's going to affect a lot of the crime prevention programs that I, I have fought for 20 years, fighting in this area to try to change. I mean, I have really spent a lot of time putting my soul into this place, and this is the little bit of money that helps us support these programs with all the children. We do summer programs, we do educational programs with the kids, we work, we partner with Alliance for Neighborhood Restoration, and all these programs. If you take this little bit of money from us, I mean, it's really going to have a bigger impact than you realize. I have seen that you have to start when they're young, and stay with them, and provide support with them until they get to college. If you don't, you're wasting your time, and that's what these programs have done, and that's the money that, that's where we get the majority of our money for these programs. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1502.38][1502.38](APPLAUSE). Sir?
Officer, just, just a quick question for you, sir.
Lieutenant.
And either way is perfectly acceptable, but just out of curiosity, are you here as an individual, or are you here in your capacity as an officer with Cocoa PD?
I'm here as a lieutenant from the Cocoa Police Department.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.[1523.48][1523.48](APPLAUSE).
We have Trevor Tezal, and after Trevor, we have Melissa Martin. Name and address, please.
Trevor Tezal.
Tezal, I'm sorry.
That's fine. 103 Holiday Lane, Cocoa Beach. So, I'm not going to be using the full three minutes. I don't think, as a non-Diamond Square resident, I can provide the kind of impassioned input that the last speaker provided, or that the, the kids, the student government from Emma Jewell Charter Academy were able to provide, but, you know, I think it's worth commenting a little bit about, well, why is this really an agenda item in the first place? And the reasons that have been purported have started to get a little muddled, to the point that we're talking about paid-for government training for city management employees. And so, I guess the point of that being put forward is that, you know, that's an example of wasted taxpayer funds, this is an example of wasted taxpayer funds. In order to keep taxes low, we need to eliminate all waste. But then, the argument is made in the same breath that this is such a small amount of money that we shouldn't be too concerned. At least that was what was kind of put forward as this item was introduced on the agenda. So, it seems to kind of go back and forth upon whether or not this is a lot of money or not. What the facts are, is that under, you know, the Community Reinvestment Act, these are tax dollars that are coming from the city. A couple of the initial speakers stated, I think very eloquently, that Diamond Square CRA, and Diamond Square is an asset to Brevard County. And I think that these, these dollars, the way that they're being spent are an asset too, in the way that they're being raised. The idea that because this has always been a problem, and it's still a problem, that, you know, that means that the money isn't being spent wisely, I think is ignorant towards some of the basic understandings and facts around intergenerational and systemic poverty that have already been brought up here. And so, I don't think that that argument holds, holds a lot of weight. So, ultimately, at the end of the day, once again, why are we here? Why are we debating this as an item? I think you can elucidate the reasons for that from a couple of different things. One is the process. I think individuals across the spectrum have very much acknowledged that this seems to be kind of, you know, sprung on us. And along with that, you know, we hear quotations from local conservative radio pundits, and I think we have to be acknowledging the fact that in state and county politics, CRAs are a very easy boogeyman to be able to target. And I think that they are in this case, and I think it's being done so to the detriment of community members who really rely on it and count on it. So, I would urge you to reconsider from that end, and I would just, you know, say that even though I'm not a Diamond Square resident, as a Brevard County resident, I'm invested in this. We either all rise together or fall together. Thank you.[1728.63][1728.63](APPLAUSE).
After Melissa Martin, we'll have Judy Coons.
Hi. Name and address. Good evening, Commissioner. Melissa Martin, I'm from Cocoa, Florida. And before I start, I'm going to try to keep it not redundant from everything else that's been said, but since you only had like 15 or 17 cards maybe, may I ask the audience to raise their hand, whether, to indicate support, or actually, to indicate opposition to the proposed resolution?
We're not, we're technically not supposed to do that. I know that sounds like bizarre, but, yeah, and we've got more, if you notice, we've probably passed that number, come close to it, and we've gotten more cards walked up.
Everyone just wink.
I think, I think, I think the general, we can understand.
You got the sentiment, good. Wanted to ensure that happened. So, my eyewitness to the, the growth of Cocoa started when I was a little girl, driving to Banana River to go fishing, and the gateway that is 520 was very different back then in the 80s, and even to a seven, eight-year-old little girl, there was a vibe there that, you know, there was some desperation... there was some desperation and danger, and just a scary kind of feeling. However, when I came back in 2000 to attend a course in, on Patrick Air Force Base where I met my husband, the gateway had changed. It was obvious that there was a lot of work that had gone, had been done in the area. I didn't know anything about, you know, Diamond Square or anything, but just from a casual observation point of view, there was differences. There was marked difference that there was still, you know, blight. However, there was a vibe of, you know, hope and working on it. And so when I said that, you know, my family should move here to Cocoa, after a lot of, you know, research and visiting the area, it was obvious that this area has a beautiful potential for growth, something that CRA has enabled to agree that it's hard to put a number on it. However, I believe that from the Brevard, you know, from the commission's point of view, it is your responsibility to put numbers. I haven't seen any numbers, however, that, in comparison between the investment of the area versus the potential costs of the area. How much crime has been laid? How much criminal and civil liability has this CRA been in, you know, in, to benefit the county overall? And I believe that home rule is a very, you know, conservative principle, and the structure of the CRA, the fact that they're using funds that they themselves worked hard for, going right back into the community, is important to take note of, as is the return on investment. The county is just benefiting from the CRA in Diamond Square. And so it's, it should be a no-brainer, but I'm glad we're able to talk about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. After Judy Coons, we'll have Alex Goines.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Have a name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Judy Coons. I live in Cocoa Beach, Florida. I was the counsel for the class of residents of the core redevelopment area called the heart of Cocoa now. With the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, we filed three lawsuits against the city and the redevelopment agency in 1988. And we successfully raised race discrimination against the zoning and redevelopment activities of the city. In that capacity, I unearthed five decades of data that demonstrates discriminatory efforts to eliminate housing, displace residents, aggregate parcels, and place gentrification into the hands of private developers. We arrived at a consent decree in 1990 to preserve the homes and historic character of the community. As I worked on the litigation, I was aware that similar plans were underfoot for the adjoining African-American community now called the Diamond Square CRA. Regarding the current proposal before the board, it seems to me that the proposed action of the county is the most recent step in a history of race-based discrimination and disinvestment of the area. I recognize that a charge of race discrimination is politically challenging, especially for well-meaning public officials, and I can see the concern that you've had, that you have demonstrated in listening to each one of the speakers, and I certainly appreciate that. I do not use the phrase lightly, but in an effort to raise awareness of the injustice that has been erected on this community, and that is proposed to be continued today by the commission. So how is this race discrimination? The Fair Housing Act of 1968 prohibits actions that have a purpose or effect of denying ownership or rental housing based on race. I am of the view that the county commission, to revoke its authority for the Diamond Square CRA, would violate the Fair Housing Act. It would, I'm going to leave the whole issue of discriminatory intent to the side and focus on discriminatory effect. This census tract has 85% minority occupied people in it, 58% of whom are African-American. Moreover, the redevelopment plan of this area denotes this census tract is occupied by 10% of the black residents of the county. A vote by the county to revoke its authority for the Diamond Square CRA is another act of disinvestment, and I'm going to submit to you race-conscious disinvestment, which has an overwhelming disproportionate impact on the African-Americans, not only in the county, but also in the city. And it could be met by much less discriminatory alternatives. I see that I've run out of time. May I continue for a few, I have a few more paragraphs.
If I allowed everybody to do that, it wouldn't be fair.
All right. Well, I will just say that there are less discriminatory alternatives, which I think a number of the other speakers have addressed. And as my clients back in 1988 said, improve, not remove. Rebuild, don't revoke. Thank you.
Alex? And after Alex, we have Pervette Bryant.
Alex Goines, 707 A Johnson Street, Cocoa, Florida. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity just to be here, to address this issue. If this was any, if this CRA is the reason why CRAs exist, this is the perfect example why this line item should be removed, Mr. Tabaya. Stats have shown today that this is the poorest census tract. It is in the greatest need of development, economic development. If you believe the theory of we're only as strong as our weakest link, you will remove this item and boost this area up. We may have political differences when it regards to CRAs, and I understand that. Mr. Smith, you love to, you know, have term limits on CRAs. Mr. Tabaya, you definitely not necessarily like CRAs as its entirety. But when we're talking about, we have to think about people. We have to think about having compassion and understanding about who is inside of this Diamond Square. So to Bill Mick, and I know he's probably listening, before you ridicule this area, my area, come visit this area. Come see Barbara Jenkins, who's still living on Barbara Jenkins. Come, come visit little Johnny who needs peanut butter. Come see the single-family home where a mother is there with seven kids and her father's in prison, and they need someone to take them to the store, take them to school. Before anyone ridicules our area, just come visit it. The Diamond Square has value. I know at times we look at dollars, we look at taxes, but inside of there, we have some great people. I heard the word waste today, blight, but I'll say that our area has been challenged. But we have a small budget. And one thing about my community, we make mountains out of molehills, and we do whatever we can with the little money that we have. So I would say that, and my wish list is, I'm requesting that Mr. Tabaya removes the item. Also, Mr. Lober, I had a conversation with you on social media, and/or Mr. Tabaya, to come visit the area. Come sit down with us, along with our city manager and our city council, and talk to the kids at Cocoa Pal. And so you can see what this line item is. It's not just a name of a CRA. These are human beings inside of this area that need your assistance. We need you. This is my first year on council, and I'm going to fight tooth and nail for these people. I'm going to make sure that you understand how important this is to me, my family, and everybody in the Diamond Square. So I encourage you, Mr. Tabaya, to remove the item. And also, I got requested from both of y'all to come visit the area. I would love to take you around. I would actually have my mother make collard greens and oxtails and whatever else we need to do to make you comfortable to come to our area, because I think it's vital before we make a decision, that you actually see the impact that this decision may have, before you make this decision. And if you come visit and you say this area doesn't have value after you leave, then remove the, I mean, then take the money away. But I guarantee you, when you see these kids in this neighborhood, I guarantee you remove the item.
Thank you. After Pervette Bryant, Michael Blake. Name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Pervette Bryant. I reside at 1220 Barrington Circle in Rockledge, and I am a property owner in Diamond Square, 373 Stone Street and 365 Stone Street. I grew up in Diamond Square. Back then, it was called Magnolia Street. And like many of our residents here, we went away and came back. I'm a proud graduate of Howard University in Washington DC and Columbia University in Manhattan, New York. We're here to build up and not tear down, but we need your help. I ask that you do not reduce funding in Diamond Square, but lend a helping hand. We're moving forward. We are advancing. Whatever the city has done, I know that you want accountability. I want accountability. Everyone in this room wants accountability, but not at the expense of taking and reducing funds in the area. There must be a way to provide accountability and keep the funding in place, whether it be systematic quarterly reports, whether it be FOA requests on a consistent basis to show where the funding is going. We ask that you do not reduce funding, but instead increase accountability as to where the funds are going. The citizens of 626 have an opportunity finally to advance. We have new growth in Diamond Square. We have a new recreation center that's coming to Diamond Square to service the senior citizens, and also the youth that are there, and we need you to support us. This is coming at a time when we're looking to move upward and not backwards. There are other alternatives that we can look to, and we just need to put our creative thinking hats on. We need to put some fire perhaps under people to make more quality decisions that will meet your approval, that will cause you to say, we do see that this is no longer a blighted area, but it's an area that's moving forward with advancement. So I'm asking you to please reconsider. Please reconsider and eliminate any decision to reduce funding for the Diamond Square community, because we want to continue moving forward, not moving backwards. We want to show you what we can do in that community, as we have all come back to build up and not tear down. Thank you.
After Michael Blake, we have Charlie Graham.
Good evening. Ah, yes, indeed.
But name and address for those that don't know you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Michael Caviss Blake, 207 Blake Avenue. Born and reared there basically all my life. I am a product of Diamond Square, what we call affectionately Diamond Square. Before I get started, I would just like to extend an invitation to everyone. Come Thursday at 7:00 PM. Have your face in the place with the human race. Cocoa High Tigers are having an opponent there, Range High School in Orlando, Florida. So if you could, if you would, please join us. I come to you as a humble servant, as a citizen of Cocoa, as a product of Cocoa. Diamond Square, formulated, origin, 1998. That's when it started. A lot of great people came from Diamond Square, starting with Dr. Jolie Smith, Roselle Jones, my father, Richard Blake, my auntie, Bertha Cooper, she's in the audience, my cousin Reggie Williams, whose birthday is today. And he served our country too, as well. And a lot of other citizens here that's behind me are products. Jewel Collins' husband, Leon Collins, even though I know they're from a gallery, but he grew up in Cocoa. So a lot of great things come from Diamond Square. When you give a person the time to prevail and persevere and show empathy, that's what I ask of you, to have a caring heart, an understanding heart, because in the Bible it tells me, wisdom is everything, but when getting wisdom, get understanding. So I want you to understand the greatness that comes from Diamond Square. We have Principal Cole that brought his children up here, his students. His last name magnifies what it's all about. What happens when you compress coal? You get what? A diamond. And that's what I'm saying to you. The human value, I want to talk to you as a humanitarian, the impact that you will have on people, because people come first, because we're all God's children. We come from different tribes, but we belong to one race. That's the human race, and we're God's people, and it's the Christmas spirit. So that's the reason why I'm asking you to have an understanding heart. Also, what I'm saying to you, I've been a part of Habitat for Humanity. Sister Kelly, who was just up here prior to me, made me wear a pink tutu. Why? Because of Habitat of Humanity. My students, I'm a school teacher, my students' grades change when they have a permanent domicile, when they're not moving from pillar to post, when they have stability in their life. That's the thing that I'm asking you. So I'm asking you to invest in people, because you can't go wrong, because people invest in us. Just think about where you are. Who'll help you along the way? Because we didn't do it on our own. MLK stated, simple, how do you judge a man or a woman's character when you take them out their comfort zone? So get out the comfort zone. Come visit us. Have your face there. I extend an invitation. There's always room at the top. So come one, come all. God bless. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Name and address?
Yes. Good evening. Charlie Graham from Satellite Beach. First of all, I'd like to welcome the new commission. First time we get to see you. Appreciate that, for your service. George Herbert Walker Bush lies in state in the U.S. Rotunda as we speak. His points of light should be a model for all commissioners and residents alike. The Diamond Square CRA is a point of light. He might be most known for his infamous quote, "Read my lips, no new taxes." And that should be a reminder to all elected to this body that despite what you have said or promised in the past, you should, like President Bush, do the right thing when presented with facts that are contrary to your pledge. The will of the people of Florida has been repeatedly denied ever since we, the people, voted to have a lottery and have the proceeds benefit our schools. That money was taken. Politicians find a legal, but perhaps unethical, way of taking away the intent of the voters. Please do not be a Robin Hood in reverse, taking from our poorest in this county and giving to the rich by eliminating funding to the Merritt Island Diamond Square CRA. Additionally, build our roads, fix our bridges, our sewers, our schools, and other infrastructure, but do it without touching even a penny of the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project plan. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for public comments, so we'll bring it back to commission. Mr. Tabaya?
Thank you, and I appreciate everyone speaking. A question was brought up, how do you break the cycle of poverty? And I don't have the answer. But I do know what the answer is not, and the answer is not money. And let me explain that answer very quickly here. The CRA was formed in 1998. It comprises 2/3 of 1 square mile. In the 20 years of existence, the CRA has received more than $1 million of payments from the Brevard County Funds. So I looked at Census Tract 626 to see if we were getting a return on these $1.1 million. This is the United States Census. I found out, once adjusted for the Bureau of Labor Statistics, individual income has dropped 25%. Household income has dropped, yes, only 1%, but the two measures that we look at for clearing up blight, individual and household income, we have seen go down since the inception of this CRA. I think it's very important that we deal with the cycle of poverty, but I think we deal with it in the right way. Now, I'll tell you what, I don't think continued investment this way... I don't know, I don't know how you sit out there quietly after hearing that we spend $7 million on a stadium or $5 million on increasing sporting events or $500,000 for a lighthouse keeper's museum or $1.7 million for a nature park or the $200,000 for a dragon boat dock. My guess is most people out there don't even know what dragon boats are. I didn't certainly before. I didn't vote for that, and a majority of this commission up here also did not vote for that. So I think that we can work together in the future to help, you know, the people that live in the Diamond Square. But I think continued investment, continued investment is not showing any returns. So maybe there are other ways to deal with it, but clearly I don't think this is the best one. So I, you know, the motion's not out there, but I would like to go ahead, once we have discussion, to adopt the resolution as proposed, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett.
Yes, sir, I'm going to call you back up here. A couple of comments. Hitting the goals of getting rid of poverty, we need to get people with jobs, being able to pay for houses, support their families. That's what the goal we're trying to get to. Nobody wants to live on handouts. I get it. I don't think a CRA is set up to be a handout, is to be a reinvestment into a community. So somehow we've gotten off track here of what our discussion is. This isn't a benevolent issue. I don't hate CRAs, and I don't think they're evil. I don't know how that got the thought out there. I think there's been some issues with it. There's issues with anything that you have human oversight with, because people make mistakes, they make errors, and some people do some things maybe they shouldn't do. But CRAs work. I come from District One. They've worked in our community. They've revitalized the area. They've gotten people working. They've taken away blight. They've increased property values. So on the thought of CRAs, and I have to do this, when you increase the area's value, the property values go up, the tax values go up, the government start getting more tax funds. So it ends up being a win-win if it's done correctly. As far as, I've got to talk to you about this, the sports stadiums, everything's bringing up, that's tourism tax dollars, and those are good things too, because that creates economy here into our area, which lowers our tax liabilities. That's out of a separate pot. That comes from tourist tax funds. And if we get more money coming into the government, it's going to be less of a liability on each one of us as citizens. You have more money to go around, and we're able to do projects and help the whole community. The goal is to have a successful, prosperous community that's not on the backs of all the taxpayers, but everybody's sharing that with what they want to do, and it's not on one group of people taking off of another. As far as this CRA, I think the million-dollar question of what's coming up is, the time is the issue. Anytime we extend time on these is the issue, because I do happen to agree with the fact if we can't fix it in 30 years, we might have something we need to look at. This might be different. It's worth the conversation. And my thought is tonight, I know this is in Commissioner Loeb's district, and I'm sure this is something we're going to vote on tonight, because I know he doesn't do anything in a hurry. He has to have all the numbers and facts also, but this is a good discussion tonight. But I have some questions, Mr. Titanic Tanich. I was trying to get some information earlier. One thing is, this CRA has no debt?
That's correct, ma'am.
How did you end up being a CRA that has no debt?
Because of the volatile and anemic TIF revenues. It would be highly unlikely any lending institution would lend money to the CRA. You have to recall that, one, this is the most, an area that suffered decades, and I'm not talking one, two, three, four, we're talking decades, you know, almost probably 100 years of disinvestment and decline. And so when the Great Recession came, I mean, their TIF value, it dropped like a rock, and they almost came close, close to the base value when they were created in 98. They didn't receive the first TIF payment actually until 2000. And I think it's, you ask, you know, this past year, I mean, the TIF, the base is 24.6 million when it was created. This year, it's 44.6 million. So it's $20 million. This year alone, the value went up 5.3 million. Why did it do that? Because the city invested in roadway. We invested a regional stormwater facility to help Wawa, Family Dollar, Dollar General, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Superb Kitchen. Those are all sales tax and gas tax dollars that don't go to the CRA. They're coming to the county. So there is investment happening, 5.3 million. The total TIF increment for this year is $20 million.
Okay, because that was going to be one of my questions. It seems like the CR has somehow been in a hibernation.
It's a dysfunction. There is a, you could go back two years, and even speaking with some members recently, is we would have an issue where we would go out and we would get a nonprofit developer, and they could build a house for $100,000, $110,000. And then the house would appraise, brand-new house, would appraise at $80,000. Well, post-new, the lending regulation, it's appraised price or sales price, whatever it lasts. You cannot even use your buy-down programs through like CDBG or anything like that to close that gap. They won't sell that, because it's a dysfunction. You can build a house for 110, and it sells at 80. Now, we did work with the county, Palm Bay, on Regina Myra, and we did four houses. We finished one or finished two, and we acquired them through coenforcement action, and then we flipped them. We got the other ones, we got the other ones, and the appraisals are starting to come up. So you're starting to see the appraisals near what the cost of construction is. But until that happened, I mean, you look at Cocoa as a whole, just look at the numbers. We have lagged behind as a city in terms of the growth of our tax base and our economy compared to any city in this county. And if you don't recognize that, you're being disingenuous, because the city does struggle. And I apologize, you know, there was a comment made about median household income. I know populations increased. I was on the U.S. Census Track American Fact Finder survey last night. Populations increased in the Diamond Square area. The median household income has increased by almost $3,000 in the last two years. The two areas that have not increased are, they've gone down some, but just a little, is poverty and the unemployment rate. But there is growth happening in Diamond Square.
If you are adding the years on it, how many years would have been left in the CRA?
Well, you know, well, this CRA was set to expire, is set to expire in 2023. And, you know, and it's interesting about this CRA, because this plan was adopted in 2014, and this plan was on the agenda on October 24th of 2014, after three requests to approve this plan, because we came back to the county commission, and we, it was pulled at the last minute by the former commissioner and said, let the next commission decide it. So then in 2015, we brought it back. We said, wait, wait, right now, the budget process going through. So we waited patiently, and then we went through the meetings regarding the CRAs. And we did, and I have two copies of the ILAs, and we have offered up, and I have to obviously speak with our new counsel, because we have a new counsel, but at the time, we had discussed sunsetting the US1 CRA in advance to preserve the Diamond Square CRA. That's how important it is, and that's how critical it is in terms of social and capital investment in our community. And this plan does call, the outside consultants, they said it should be extended for 25 more years. That's what they say, and I don't disagree, because there's systemic issues there. It's not going to turn on a dime. It doesn't happen.
So you have five years left. So why is it now that you're coming in trying to extend the years?
Well, we actually came back in 14 when they redid the redevelopment plan and asked, well, we presented the letter, and it made it on the agenda, and then it got pulled. So we never got the chance to ask. So we didn't come here to ask. We came here because at 3:48 on Thursday, I get an email that the full and final agendas for the county commission is being posted, and I go and I look at it, and there's an item there about the CRA, but yet the public record shows, because I did a public records request, that this item's been under consideration well before the election. There's emails between Commissioner Tobias and his chief of staff going back to early November, November 5th, and nobody could bother to call, and we have invited members of this commission. Recently, we invited Commissioner Loeb to take a tour. But we have invited members of the commission, because, and Commissioner Smith, thank you, because you did take the time out of your day to come and learn about the CRA and walk it. And you saw the Regina Myra subdivision. All eight of those homes are built, and they're occupied, single-family homeownership, and they're taking care of them.
Well, I'm going to try not to, I've got a lot of questions. I don't want to get down in the mud with a lot, it's okay, with a lot of this stuff, because I'm hoping this commission won't do anything tonight. I'm not going to vote tonight to revoke this, but that way I can get some questions answered from you offline. And, but those were the main questions I wanted to kind of get to, is it just seems the CRA's been in a bit of a hibernation. Somehow it looks like it's starting to get some life into it. I am not in favor of having an unlimited CRA. So I need to figure out why we need to do this, what the time spanned is, what the goal is, because I don't think CRAs are evil. I think they do their job. So I'm going to be looking for those things from you, sir, and that's, just as a citizen, I want to know that also. So that's going to be my questions. I'm going to want to get answered offline. Thank you.
Commissioner Loeb.
Everyone's probably wondering, what's the guy in District Two going to say? All right, I have so many notes, it almost looks like a crazy person was here and started writing on this, but there's some things I need to get across. First off, I just want to verify, because I want to make sure my impression is what your impression is as well. When we spoke about this recently, did I not give you an opportunity to fully articulate, at least to a reasonable degree?
Without a doubt.
Your thoughts? And Mr. Mayor, I see you back there. When we spoke in person, when I came to the city of Cocoa, did I not give you a full opportunity to articulate your concerns about this issue? Okay. Unfortunately, with sunshine law being what it is, I would love to have spoken with Mr. Tobias, to have gotten his thoughts with respect to this issue, so that I could have in advance of this meeting, the pros and the cons, the good and the bad. But unfortunately, the way the law is written, I didn't have the ability to do that. So a lot of what I'm hearing from Mr. Tobias, I'm hearing for the first time, and it's no fault of his own, because he complies with the law. I comply with the law with respect to us not communicating about matters that we're not permitted to communicate about outside of this sort of a setting. I will tell you, I've heard some really good, I've heard some really bad, and I don't mean to sour the mood by any means, but the one item, and this is not going to be my focus for just a few moments here, that I really found repugnant and distasteful, was an attempt to, and I'll just phrase it as I phrase it, to play the race card with respect to this commission voting on any basis other than what's in the best interest of the district. I can tell you, I spent quite a bit of time with Mr. Blake back there. He was probably my favorite individual with respect to this campaign on the other side of the aisle. I spent time with other folks that were white. I spent time with folks that were of all sorts of ethnicities. I've never cared what anyone's ethnic makeup is. In the dealings that I've had with all of the commissioners up here, with the county attorney, with the county manager, with county department heads and directors, I have never seen, heard, or even had anything implicitly winked at me suggesting that race had any motivation or basis to any of this. So all I can tell you is, from my perspective, I don't see that being a determining factor, certainly not for myself, and I've not gotten any indication from any of my colleagues or any of the folks that I work with that it's a factor for them. The last thing I'll say on that topic is, as was mentioned, I am an attorney. I'm in trial this week. I was in trial yesterday morning. I had to get out a little bit earlier to work on commission business. I told the judge, as the trial was more than a one-day trial, that I had to leave early today, because I had to be here unless he's ordering me at the threat of being put in a holding cell. I had to be out in order to be here for this meeting. I got out earlier today. My point, let me, I'm just going to skip ahead in the interest of time, because I know there's a lot on this agenda. I know that the argument has been mentioned, I know by Mr. Tobias, by Mr. Goines, and then it was hinted to by one of my colleagues on the commission here, that decades in existence is something that's potentially troubling. I also heard from at least one of the individuals that came up to speak in public comment that we are potentially, if we go forward, we actually approve this motion as written, we would be taking money away from that area. And I understand that you can phrase things a number of different ways. I think that the view of CRA is espoused by Mr. Tobias, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the areas that are not within that CRA district are subsidizing it simply because you have a base level value of property that's subject to whatever millage may apply. And I believe, and this is based on our conversation, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I just have rough notes here, that the base value of this particular CRA when it was at inception is $24.6 million.
Correct, sir.
And now it's roughly $20 million higher in value.
That's correct, sir.
Roughly. That difference, that appreciation, where the millage applies to that, that's what stays in the CRA. And folks would say, well, it's generated there, so why, you know, how is it that the county has any entitlement to it? Because the county is still providing services. We're still providing, we're still providing everything from county roads to potentially, depending on the area, whether we're talking Merritt Island or Cocoa, sewer, storm drain, sheriff's office. I understand you all have your own police department, fire. There are a lot of things, mosquito spraying that the county provides. Now, I'm not saying that that overrides the concerns, that that in and of itself is sufficient to say, well, the CRA has no value, it has no entitlement to it. But I think that we have oftentimes two very polarized sides, one that's totally anti-CRA and one that's totally pro-CRA, and neither of them are willing to compromise. I think that there are some CRAs that make very effective use of their funds. I think there's some CRAs that, quite frankly, if we had them on the agenda instead of this one, I would be very quick to say aye and have them on the chopping block. At this point, as I said, and I know as Commissioner Pritchett had alluded to, I just heard right now from Mr. Tobias, I don't like doing anything rashly. What I would like to do is, I would like to afford the other commissioners, and I apologize for creating homework for them, but I would hope that I can afford the other commissioners the opportunity to speak with the new mayor of Cocoa. And if it turns out that the concerns that the commissioners have are not properly addressed or addressed to their satisfaction, this CRA may end up getting axed, but I'm not prepared to do that at this juncture. I think there are things that are very important that we go over. I think determining what specific impacts have been achieved and when they've been achieved with the resources that have been in place, I think that's something that ought to be focused on by Cocoa and by the CRA in any such meeting. I do agree that a CRA should not remain in perpetuity. I do think that there is some merit, even though the individual that Mr. Goines and Mr. Tobias referenced to, I'm not even going to give the airtime by repeating his name. I don't agree with him on almost anything, but I do agree that he had a valuable point with respect to having a question where if a CRA exists for 20 years and the area is still blighted, what's going on? Or, you know, really, is it doing its job? And I don't know if the answer's yes or no. I'm allowing for the possibility that maybe it is doing its job, but I don't have all the information that I need in order to feel comfortable voting on this tonight. What I would say is, is I have a willingness to be flexible, and I hope that my colleagues have a willingness to be flexible within reason. I would hope that the CRA, if the CRA is made aware of Mr. Tobias' concerns, now that some of them have been brought to light, and perhaps additional concerns, they would be willing to indicate what their plans are that would address those concerns, so that potentially we can all flex a little bit, and no one necessarily leaves thrilled, but everyone leaves perhaps at least acceptably content. So I would ask certainly to have the Cocoa mayor there. I think having Mike Blake is, you certainly invested the community, and as you said, you're a product of this area. I think that's helpful if Mr. Goines or anyone else feels it appropriate to be there. You know, I don't know that it needs to be a humongous event by any means. We'll notice that I spoke with Ms. Bentley earlier as a meeting, so we don't have any sunshine issues. I would like to do it in the near future. I don't think this is something that should wait six months to take place. I do believe that there ought to be an opportunity afforded for folks on both sides to get their concerns together, so that this is something that's not done impulsively or done without adequate forethought. But I would say as well, in defense of Mr. Tobias, and I've jumped in on some of these Facebook conversations where he's being criticized or has been criticized for springing this, and I heard that from one of the individuals in public comment this evening, for springing this on folks last minute. I will tell you, it didn't appear last minute to me. I don't believe that there was any notice requirement that was violated. It didn't spring on the agenda any sooner or later than the vast majority of other items. Just because people weren't aware of it, I think it's inappropriate to take that out as some sort of malfeasance or misfeasance on his part. So I would say, rather than focusing on attacking the individual that's expressed some concerns that I think have at least a good, valid basis, address those concerns. Tell us what you all are doing that's benefiting that area and the community, and I'll certainly give you a fair shake. I believe that everyone here will give you a fair shake. But I think that the ad hominem, personal attacks, the suggestions as far as there being an ill motive for having this on the agenda, that sort of stuff is counterproductive. I can tell you, as I mentioned, I'm in trial this week. I'm going to be in trial again tomorrow morning. That's what I'm doing. I'm telling you, unless I'm in the hospital, that's where I'm going to be. The threat of a lawsuit will never, ever be able to bully me into acting a certain way. I will tell you, anyone that has that in their mind, it is so ungodly counterproductive, it's not funny. If you want to treat me the way that I an ill motive for having this on the agenda, that sort of stuff is counterproductive. I can tell you, as I mentioned, I'm in trial this week. I'm going to be in trial again tomorrow morning. That's what I'm doing. I'm telling you, unless I'm in the hospital, that's where I'm going to be. The threat of a lawsuit will never, ever be able to bully me into acting a certain way. I will tell you, anyone that has that in their mind, it is so ungodly counterproductive, it's not funny. If you want to treat me the way that I, I want to be treated, and if you want me to treat you the way that you want to be treated, that's how we move forward, by trying to abide by the golden rule to a degree. And if it's, if it's something where the case is made one way or the other in a compelling fashion, that's how this is going to go in the future. And I'm not opposed to resolving this any which way, but I think that if you want to, to have the safest possible outcome, and I don't mean just you, I mean anyone that's looking at the CRA's best interest, you need to, to be a little bit less confrontational. It doesn't apply to everyone. There were only a handful of folks that were confrontational about it, and you really need to just convey that information to us to show why it is that it's meritorious and why it is that it's deserving of having that money continue to come in. Because if you do that, I think you'll have more support on this commission.
Mr. Tabia?
So it sounds like Mr. Loeb is, Commissioner Loeb is interested in tabling?
Yes.
So what I'm, I just had two questions. You know, I have a motion on the table, I'll be more than willing to pull it off. I just wanted a question for Ms. Bentley and then one for Mr. Loeb, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I leave? Any questions?
You go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks. If we were to give notice to the city of Cocoa and Diamond Square CRA before taking action, would there be anything legally preventing them from rushing into obligating themselves to future projects before we could have another meeting?
Nothing in the statutes, no.
And if they were to do this, would that compromise our position in any legal proceeding in the event we were to assert our authority, protect the fiscal interests of the public?
If there is outstanding debt, the county would have to take it on if you were to eliminate the CRA.
Okay. And my question to Mr., Commissioner Loeb, I know you haven't been a part of this board very long, but I'm, I'm going to go with your intuition on this, but I want, I want you to be fully cognizant of the facts that have transpired and understand, you were very busy before you got on, got on this board. But this board voted unanimously to request that the CRAs sunset early. And two weeks ago, a Cocoa CRA, one that is led by the man that was just standing up there, extended it 14 years. Not only did they not sunset it early, they extended it 14 years. So my question to you is, do you trust that individual?
[affirmative]
That they will not obligate debt or anything if we are to table this? That, that's, that's the question.
Okay, quiet down, please. Is that, you want him to answer the question? Okay.
Yes.
May I answer it after posing a couple of questions of my own? Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Okay, because there's other commissioners that want to speak, and I know.
I apologize. I'm trying to be as, as quick as I can, but not be overly hasty with respect to how I address this. Who here is actually on the board of that CRA? All right, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you all, just by a show of hands, and keep your hands up for a minute, if you would, I'm sorry. If I do what I think is the right thing and agree to table this, will you all not put me in a bind by incurring debt to try to tie my hands after the fact? Keep your hands up if you're going to do the right thing as well. I have your word on that?
Yeah.
Okay. That's good enough for me.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I've heard an awful lot of interesting thoughts, emotion, facts. I have, as Mr. Tekanich mentioned, toured the Diamond Square area. I was very impressed with what they have done. I can tell you, there's an awful lot left to be done, but the progress that's being made is, to me, quite stunning. You've got Dollar General, you've got, as a family dollar, you've got Wawa coming in, you've got O'Reilly Auto Parts. These are commercial businesses that are, please, I have the floor. I listen to you folks, listen to me. So you've got a lot of positive things going on, and I can tell and assure Commissioner Tabia that if you folks have said that you're willing to stand down, not increase or look for more debt, I know, I've worked with Cocoa, I've worked with Cocoa Beach. If somebody tells me that they're an honest person and they're going to do what they say they're going to do, I depend on them doing it. So I don't have any doubt that we can look at this, we don't have any rush to do it, you're not going to go out and stab us in the back. I think there's some middle ground we can look at here, we can reach some agreements, and you are doing good work there. And I don't want to tie your hands. But at the same time, I am on record as saying that CRAs by and of themselves aren't bad. My problem with CRAs is that they just never go away, and the county never gets paid back the money, which is like saying the bank never gets paid back for giving you a loan. But I think there's some extenuating circumstances that have existed in this, in this particular CRA. And I think that it behooves us to look at those circumstances and see, from our perspective, what is the best way for the county moving forward? And what's the best way for you folks to get your community to where you want it to go? So I agree with Commissioner Loeb. I think that we need to take a fresh look at this and move forward. So I'm willing to do that.
Mr. Loeb, did you want to speak again?
No, I think we've already gotten it addressed. Thank you, though.
Okay, and I, I'm not conflicted on the issue. I fundamentally disagree with CRAs, and you can boo me and be upset with me, but it's not personal to Diamond, it's not personal to anywhere. We've seen them in affluent areas, and I am adamantly opposed. And because in actuality, although your area is, is compelling, I mean, to reinvest, I'm, I grew up north of Detroit, I've seen poverty, I've seen Detroit get worse when I didn't think it could get any worse. So I understand what systemic poverty looks like and what it's like. But I think that there has to be another vehicle. We have to find a different way to do this. I think CRAs unfairly allocate funds to certain areas, and other areas could suffer because of it. Not saying that Diamond Square is one of them. But I can't see how one area deserves to have a CRA over another when, you know, I mean, you could just blanket the entire county and you could have multiple and create multiple CRAs, and now your funding is limited to each of those areas. So I think that there has to be a different vehicle, because obviously you do need investment in that area. But investment more in, in jobs, investment more in your infrastructure, investment to change that culture, to change that area, to beautify that area. I don't, but I don't believe that a CRA is the way to go. I think, you know, we as a, as a commission made, made a commitment to eliminate them all if we had the power to do so, and we do have the power to do it. And, you know, perhaps, perhaps the common area, at least for me, and, and I, you know, Commissioner Loeb just got here. I don't expect him to be up to speed on it. But this issue has been such a big part of a few of the members sitting up here. We've had workshops, we've driven, we've had tours of the CRAs, we've gone through the books, we've done the audits, we've, we've done it all as a board. So, I mean, I would vote in favor tonight if we were going to vote in favor to eliminate, only because I do know the history. But I do believe that we need to find a way to invest in the area, but I don't believe that the CRA is the way to go. So I don't, I mean, obviously, I don't believe that the votes are here to eliminate, at least, the CRA doesn't have to go away. The city, Cocoa can, can keep the CRA, but it's the county's investment, again, that I don't agree with, at least, at least not through the vehicle of the CRA. I think there's other ways that we can invest in your community, and we should invest in your community, because unfortunately, it hasn't been done in the past. And 20 years, if you've only gotten this far, I don't know that another 20 is going to make all of the difference to turn the area around. I hope it does. I mean, just like I said, it broke my heart to see what happened to my sister city, too. So, I don't know, Commissioner Tabia, I don't think you've got the support to eliminate the CRA, judging by everyone's comments. I don't know if you have an alternate motion or if you want Commissioner Loeb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm still smart.
Your item.
I'm still smarting a little bit from the $7.5 million we were obligated to. I do have a question for our county manager, because it brought, it was brought up about springing this on. How much heads up did the county get when the city of Cocoa unilaterally decided to extend the CRA, thus obligating the entire county for at least $7.5 million of increase? $7.5 million, 30 times this amount. How much time did, did we get on that?
The city did provide a letter to both the chair and myself, and they had offered two dates to come up in, I think it was during the October timeframe. One was a night meeting and was a day meeting, and we set it up so that they could come to the day meeting. So we had that 30-plus day notice.
Okay. And, and when that was brought up, which was, I think, 41, 41 days ago, I was just counting on my phone, that's when I mentioned that I was going to examine both this CRA as well as the other CRA. But I, I'm still smarting from the $7.5 million that taxpayers are obligated for the extended 14 years. So I know this is going to go down, but I don't see any other alternatives in raising taxes, and that's a promise that I understand there's a lot of people here, but I knocked on a lot of doors, looked a lot of people in the face and said, I'm not going to raise your taxes. And yes, you know, President Bush said, read my lips, no new taxes. It was pointed out. What wasn't pointed out is the following election, he lost.
Please be respectful.
I, I'm, 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 I'm good on my word, and so I, I've got to make the motion again to, to go in, pyrrhic victory here, to say the least, to go in and, and make a motion to, for the resolution as written, Madam Chair.
And I'll second. No more discussion? Okay. We know how this is going to go, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails? Choose true.
I'm not sure if the board wants to make any more movement on this item. It was Commissioner Tabia's item, but if not, nothing changes from where it's at.
Madam Chair, it's, it's very clear that nothing is going to change on this CRA, and I'm almost ready to say, short of court action or legislative action, nothing is going to change on CRA.
Well, and I believe.
So I, I don't believe it, in all honesty. I appreciate everyone showing up. Before you leave, I'm not going to make the motion to have a workshop, because it's very clear that the sentiment of the individuals up here are in full and strong support of CRA, and I'm not going to drag, I'm not going to vote to drag you guys out. I, I lost this one, and I love our system, and I appreciate each and every person getting out here and participating. So I, I am not going to vote for a workshop, because it's very clear that we are not, we will be wasting more of your time, that you could be out in your wonderful, wonderful community. So I will not be making nor voting for that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Loeb?
I understand Mr. Tabia's comments, and I certainly understand why he, why he's saying what he's saying. As I mentioned earlier, one of the things I was hoping for is that people would be flexible. I don't know that, that either the commission or the CRA is going to end up getting 100% of, of what it wants. Now that said, I would still ask to have a meeting set up. We can notice it as a board meeting or whatever Ms. Bentley feels is most appropriate to avoid any sunshine issues in the near but not instantaneous future so that we can see where things are at. When I voted this down, quite frankly, I'd prefer not to have voted on this at all tonight because I don't feel that I have enough info in order to make an informed decision. And if I'm put in a position where I have to vote without all of the info on hand, I'm not going to change from, from what's in place, because I can always put it on the agenda myself if I need to down the road. And I think it's something where more research needs to be done. And I'm not saying for six months or for a year, I'm talking six weeks out, something like that, where we can sit down and, God willing, figure out the good and the bad and determine what compromises may be able to be made so that some of Mr. Tabia's concerns may be addressed and some of the CRA's concerns may be addressed. I'll, I'll tell you, I don't like, and I was aware, that Cocoa did extend the CRA by that duration. I didn't care for that at all. And that's something we can discuss when we're in the same room and we're sitting down where it's not this sort of a setting and with other items on the agenda. But I would still ask to have that meeting, because I do believe that there's a good chance we could have a productive outcome from it.
I agree.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I agree with that, Commissioner Loeb. Cocoa did a negative four on one CRA and they add it to the other, and I think this has to be a good conversation, because the, the question is the best return on investment, that we're doing the right thing with taxpayer dollars. And I don't have enough information. I, you know, there's so many numbers here to consider of trying to make these decisions, and the only thing we were given was revoke or not revoke. So, I mean, come on, there's got to be a discussion, hopefully, that we'll be able to give you some things, maybe that, that will help guide you with some ideas on your CRAs, too. And again, I don't think this should be a forever thing that goes on. We need to get in and fix it and get out. Nobody wants to sit in a blighted area for 30 years. So on, on that, Commissioner Loeb, I'll be looking forward to when you're ready. I, I'm going to trust you on it. It's your community. They're knocking on your door all day long. Now, I get it, in District 1, we get it up in our area. So I'm going to be counting on you, sir, to lead this charge in.
May I ask, Ms. Bentley, with respect to setting up a meeting, what's the proper procedure for something like that? Should I do it in the form of a motion?
You could do a motion, or you could take a, a day or two and talk to your community contacts and figure out what kind of meeting you want, and then bring it back to maybe the 18th for a proposal for the board?
That makes sense.
If you want the whole board to attend.
I think that's the best bet. Thank you.
Senator, we'll all get a chance to look at the calendars and stuff, too. I believe we're at J1. Oh, I apologize, J3. You guys want to take a break? You guys want to take a quick break?
Very brief, maybe.
Okay, we're going to take a five, seven-minute break and let everybody get a chance to leave without feeling like they're interrupting. Sorry, guys. So sorry.
Yeah, yeah.